This conference will now be recorded.
And I'll open it up at 6:05 PM. And so are there any additions to tonight's agenda or corrections? If not, I'll call for a motion to accept the agenda tonight. Councillor Webb.
Yeah, I'll move to accept the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councillor Allen. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Councillor Allen?
Aye.
Councillor Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Hilbert?
Aye.
Councillor Williams?
Aye.
Councillor Potter is absent. Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. New business, Title IX dash zero four sidewalks, potential amendments discussion. And we're glad to have Matt Straight with us tonight. And has everyone had a chance to read through the packet that's been presented to us tonight?
Yes.
And so if so, I'll just turn it over to Matt to introduce tonight's workshop and what we're going to discuss. So it's all yours, Matt. Thank you. Oh, Stephanie, go ahead.
I believe Councillor Webb had something. I saw his hand up.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I was under the impression that we were having this workshop was for waivers of remonstrance, which included more than sidewalks.
It had to be in the sidewalk section, but yeah, that's what we're talking about tonight for sure.
So yeah, it isn't just sidewalks. It's then the half-street improvements. Is that correct?
Well, so half-street improvements are typically commercial, not residential. The requirement for that.
I thought we'd been talking all along when these people are signing these waivers or remonstrance, that then we could come back and force them to help on the sidewalks and the half-street improvements. It's only the sidewalks?
Yeah, I don't think it's half-street improvement, Dale. Hold on.
I don't believe so.
No, it's sidewalk storm and gutter. So curb, sidewalk, curb and gutter, I guess.
Curb and gutter? Okay.
Curb and gutter.
Part of the street improvement, Dan.
Yeah, it's just not asphalt.
Okay.
Like a develop, in a subdivision, that's when they would do the half-street improvement or the entire street improvement. And then commercials where they would do half-street.
Councillor Allen?
Yeah, my question would be probably to Joe Sett is who typically is going to get stuck with the cost of the asphalting if the residents were to put in the curb and gutter and sidewalk at a later date? Does that fall totally on the city? Is there a fee going to be charged or is there a fee now? Or how's that currently working? And what would you like to change on the current status of how we're doing it?
So there currently isn't a fee charged. Ultimately, the asphalt would be, so on these, where we seem to be doing the waivers is that unimproved platted areas. So subdivision, they're going to have to do all the bells and whistles, asphalt, everything. But these individual lots that they're building like up on Louisiana, each person is really responsible to bring the gravel road to their driveway. Andy's doing the full gravel road for the three houses or whatever, Mr. Perdue. So one thing that's missing out of the code is any requirements or direction for staff on these kind of unimproved platted areas. So the only other way you could do it is outside the city being responsible for the asphalt is some sort of improvement district. And then when they sign a waiver, they also sign away their right to be a no vote in an improvement district. So that's the best we've gotten so far is if they sign a waiver of remonstrance, they're agreeing, when we come back to do it, or if we form an LID, they will participate.
Okay, let's just say, for example, we decide to do an LID on, what's that street off of Louisiana? I Street that has the three or four houses with the dead end. It's kind of muddy right now. And there's only three houses there. And it costs $75,000 to pave that at a later date. And there's lots on the other side of the street that aren't developed yet. Is there a way or something in place that's going to tag those other lots to pay their share when they develop that after the street's already there?
Well, so if you did an LID, and I'd have to pull up the code, maybe Matt can pull it up. There's a percentage of that you have to have for the LID to take hold of the adjacent landowners that are affected. So those lower lots would be part of it as long as you either had waivers that didn't allow someone to vote no or you had enough of the property owners participating in the vote to go over the percentage, which then would force those lower people to be part of it whether they liked it or not.
I see, even though they weren't building a house currently?
Yeah, you would put in curb gutter, whatever, on their side too, or the street on their, all the way to their side. And then they'd have to pay for that.
Well, it's improving, it's improving their value if and when they did improve, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that that might not be, is it not in the code, Matt? It's in an ordinance?
The stuff that talks about the ability to remonstrate, yeah, I don't know exactly where that is in the city.
I'll search while you guys are talking. I think it's a specific ordinance that gives the council the right to form an improvement district. So let me look it up.
Yeah, planning doesn't usually get involved in the sidewalk remonstrance issues. The only reason I'm really here this evening is because I'm trying to figure out what the city council wants because we're doing a code update and we want to update that section. Because right now, the city has kind of an awkward process where we have to take every waiver of remonstrance to the city council in order to have them kind of bless it. And so we start out this whole process by trying to modify the code to simply have the city manager be able to do that. And there are very clear criteria in our code today that say when the city manager could or could not allow that to happen and not have to take it to the city council. And so we brought it to you folks with a recommendation that we eliminate the city council step. But that kind of started a steamroller where we talked about more and more things related to sidewalks. And at the same time internally, we're trying to get the city in a state where it doesn't pass on sidewalks as often anymore. We're trying to get more sidewalks built, even if they're in places like up on Louisiana where it might not seem to make sense. But if every single project that comes along, we review the criteria for a waiver of remonstrance and it really says if there's no sidewalks that way and there's no sidewalks that way, you don't have to do it. Well, if we don't start somewhere, then we will never have sidewalks. So we would prefer to start having people build sidewalks, even if it seems like these are going to be sidewalks to nowhere. They won't eventually be sidewalks to nowhere. And once one starts, it's going to create a domino effect where everybody else is going to have to start building them because they will exist within 200 feet of the property and therefore meet the criteria. And therefore they're going to have to build it. And so that's really what we're trying to go for is to get to see if you, the city council agrees that we want more sidewalks. And if you do, then we'll move forward with that. And then as a second issue, we want to see if you're okay having us not bring every single one to the city council and require a lot of administrative time and cost in doing that and a lot of heartache and pause buttons for the applicants who do want to file those. That's pretty much the presentation we had. You asked that I give you some other city samples. And so we sent you something here in the packet. And I tried including kind of a peppering of different approaches from different cities. And some cities that you see in here do still take it to the city council. You're not the only one that does that. Some do have it done with just the signature of the city administrator or city manager. And then there's another sample in here of a city that just requires a fee in lieu instead of a waiver of remonstrance. And that might be a good way to go too, because with the fee in lieu program, what that allows us to do is take that money and use it to build sidewalks somewhere else that might make more sense. Maybe we have enough money to build out an entire street somewhere. And as more money comes in from those in lieu fees, then the city can build out those sidewalks. It would get them off the hook. The remonstrance waiver wouldn't be there anymore. They would just be the fee in lieu. And then the future homeowners wouldn't be on the hook to have to pay for that when the city decides they want to do the sidewalk in front of their house. Because they paid their fee in lieu, they're off the hook. So that's kind of another approach that we could use in Verona moving forward. That's really the extent of my presentation, Joseph. I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that.
No, that's everything I was thinking.
Yeah, man, I was going to just ask you a question. And I read what St. Helens does. And you know, in the number four, you could either apply for a street opening permit or number six, in lieu option, a lieu and fee option in replacement of the remonstrance. And would that apply to like the example we were just talking about on I Street?
You, the council, would get to decide if it applies or not. We could write that in lieu ordinance just about any way we wanted.
I'd really like that number six, fee in lieu option, I think it would help us. And because there's a couple of categories that that definitely would fall into.
Where are you seeing a six, Rick?
It's back towards the end of the, in the St. Helens, City of St. Helens.
I see a five with a B and a C. I mean, a four and a five, yeah.
Yeah, right underneath St. Helens is four and then.
Yeah, number six.
Number six.
I see it.
I thought you were looking at a subpoint.
It's on page eight.
Yeah.
Of the packet. Now, I'm certainly not intimately familiar with how to create an ordinance that would allow a fee in lieu. So if that's what you folks wanted, then we'd have to do a little bit more research and get Ruben involved because that's not something planners normally get involved with. That's definitely something the city engineer would be doing. So we'd have to rope all them into that.
Joseph, what about the section in Millersburg? Section B that talked about, you know, about elevations, profiles and stuff that haven't been established? How would the city of Verona handle a new area where we don't have elevations or it's really a street plan engineered out and then we're start asking people to put in sidewalks?
Yeah, so that's the thing we were talking about Louisiana. At minimum, getting the points down Louisiana that they have to come meet back up to elevation wise. Other than that area up there and the cross streets that are totally non-existent, there's not really an area in town, other than that and like any new subdivision, that we don't have adjacent elevations. You could pull an elevation pretty easy, but yeah, that section would be troublesome if we did that. The other thing that worries me about the fee in lieu is that you're almost automatically going to have to either have that be more expensive than it really costs or be the city willing to do it once we get that fee because that is always going to get more expensive as time goes on. And depending on, do you do it on linear feet of frontage? Because if someone had 50 feet of a sidewalk and someone else had, you know, 100 feet, then how is that fee determined? That would be my other thing that if we're thinking we're going that way, those are two kind of hiccups we'd want to iron out.
Well, sidewalk price by the foot, that's pretty easy to calculate. But there is things that that change as far, you know, when you have to excavate or build retaining walls. So there's other variables.
Yeah, but if someone had 100 feet of frontage and someone only had 50, they probably need different fees addressed to them or something.
Yeah, it's five yards of concrete. It's pretty easy to figure.
Councillor Webb?
Yeah, so if we go the fee in lieu way, I mean, I kind of like that idea myself. But so somebody pays. And I like the idea of be able to take the money and spend it somewhere else. Because I kind of truly believe that we really need to just identify the safe path to school or the, you know, what makes sense. You've lived in your house forever. Did you ever feel unsafe walking out of your house, walking down the street, walking over to the school? There's so much traffic, that's an unsafe condition. But when Louisiana ties through, then we're going to up the traffic on that street. And then it is probably appropriate to have a sidewalk to get that safety separation. So I kind of envision, that's kind of my thoughts is we actually probably have a committee sit down and really identify where do we need these sidewalks in our towns? You know, we probably need one up State Street past where the sidewalk ends, tying into those side streets to give a safe path down that hill. But you know, piling that onto these landowners way behind the end of the game here is really awkward. But if I was the landowner, I paid this fee in lieu and you're building sidewalks everywhere else and I want a sidewalk. And I'm going to be down, the city council going, I paid for it, where's my sidewalk? So I see an awkwardness there.
That's always one of the options. And then they don't have to have a waiver of remonstrance or a fee in lieu or nothing because they built their responsibility.
Yeah.
So, well, yeah, if they don't want the sidewalk at the time of construction, they're kind of giving up their right to where that money goes.
That's exactly correct.
Okay, we would need to be sure that we express that to them at that time is you're paying this fee. You understand if you want a sidewalk, you put it in now. Because we can't guarantee you that your money is going to go in front of your house. We might identify it to go for a better purpose. So I could go along with that, long as people are aware.
Part of the problem I see with that is as a bus driver, we pick up kids above where the sidewalks are now. And if you want to put a sidewalk in on the side of the street where the kids are, you'd have to hopscotch back and forth. And most of that hill, you really can't put a sidewalk anyway. And I have one issue with the in lieu option. And that is we don't have unlimited area to build. So if we went with an in lieu option, I think we'd have a lot of sidewalks not being built because there isn't future development. Because we don't have unlimited area to build that we're going to be charging people for sidewalks.
You lost me there, Grant. Can you back up, please?
Sure.
And say that again?
Sure. If you're charging people a fee and you put a sidewalk somewhere other than the person you're charging for the sidewalk. Okay, we don't have unlimited places where we can build that will require a sidewalk. So the people are going to get a sidewalk, but there's going to be people paying for them that won't because there won't be people backloading the fee.
Right.
Now, you didn't misunderstand what I meant about the sidewalks on the hill, did you?
Well, there's places where it'd be obviously more challenging than others. I mean.
It really, it'd be very challenging.
And that's where I think it's still a good idea for it to come through council, even if we change the rules for the next year. Because that gives council, be it me, you, or anybody else in the future, a chance to really see the problems. Not load it all on whoever is the city administrator at the time or public works director, if we have one, that kind of thing. I think it's a chance to, even if we get it wrong, hey, this isn't working right. Maybe we modify things. But I'm glad Councillor Webb brought up the school thing because I've thought about this quite a bit. And my wife and I went and drove and walked around. And if we're really serious about bringing in more area around the school for future development, which that's the direction we're heading currently, I think you have to think 30 to 50 years out. Do we want to be the council that said, we're going to have sidewalks in a decent, safe place for our children to walk back and forth and not walk down the middle of the street like they currently do all over the place? Or not? And I think it just becomes a public safety thing, especially within, I don't know how far people walk to school, but I would think it's 10, 15 blocks all direction, you know? You guys that drive buses, tell me more.
It's one mile, they are.
One mile, wow.
Yeah, if you're within one mile, you have to walk unless you're on a hill, on a place like on State where it starts to climb and you got hill on one side. And then you got on the other side, there's no people, but you can't really put a sidewalk there either. See, the school is required. If you don't have a sidewalk, we got to pick you up in a bus. That's the law, right, Rick?
Yeah, and I think there is a grade level that we, I think it's after sixth grade. I, correct me if I'm wrong, Grant, but all the kids that live downtown, we, I think we have to pick up the six and below. But once they.
If they're within a mile, if they're within a mile, they're a walker. Unless they're like, I think kindergarten, we have to pick up.
Yeah.
And I don't think it matters if you're high school or, you know, elementary school. If there's not a sidewalk like the kids that live on G Street, I think the law requires us to pick them up.
Stephanie, go ahead.
That's, there's a lot of variables that contribute to it because I live next to the school and I don't have a sidewalk and my second grader has to walk. So there's lots of variables to consider on that one. That's the school thing, not really our task.
Go ahead, Joseph.
So another element to this is that as staff, we're finding a lot of stormwater issues on streets that have no sidewalks, curb or gutter. Where we've allowed development, so one example is Cherry Street. We have a lot of stormwater issues where the water's coming straight down the road and going to the lowest driveway. And then we're getting a call because the water's coming into his driveway. But if he had, if everyone had curb and gutter and sidewalk, there would be a channel for the water to go where we could put catch bases and direct the flow. But right now, it's just kind of a free for all. And there's a lot of areas of town where they assume because the water hits the road and runs into their property, then it's the city's fault or problem. That's another thing when we talk about kind of foregoing that responsibility of a sidewalk in a new home build, we're also kind of compounding the problems we're going to see in the future for storms because we are not setting it up to be directed anywhere.
Okay, well, let's just say tomorrow, we said bam, magic wand, you got to do it. Well, who's responsible for the engineering for elevations, stormwater systems put in before you start laying curb right on top of where you might need to put your main lines and stuff? I mean, is that going to be plotted out ahead of time or?
Well, so the elevation, so we're already working on that for Louisiana. We already know that's the, but it would be if, so that's my other reason of going back and actually getting something in the code that addresses what council wants to have happen with those unimproved platted lots. Because you're going to, that's the low hanging fruit. We're going to see multiple developers buy those and chunk in houses. And if we don't have something in the code that staff can say, this is what you're responsible for, we're kind of stuck in this place where the city is going to do the elevation work on Louisiana to point out where that road should be and what the heights should be. They're going to put in gravel roads, no sidewalks, and we're just compounding the problem over and over again. So I think aside from the sidewalk discussion, we need to have a bigger discussion with planning and the code about how do those fit in? They're not exactly a subdivision, so we can't keep them. And they're definitely should have more requirements than one single family home. So it's like this middle ground where they're kind of free floating.
You know how they're skirting around the development thing. And we need to make sure that it's, that the bigger city needs aren't skirted around by doing that. So if they're going to do a little bit here and a little bit there, how is it equitable that we get what the community deserves in the long run and not pass the buck on to the third or fourth homeowner or whatever, you know? So that, I don't think we're going to come to a conclusion tonight. I think we're starting the conversation and we're going to need help from planning and help from staff and more of a willingness from council to go follow through with change. And I'm ready for change. And I think especially around schools and any, you know, and any areas where kids have to walk, we need to start looking probably at main thoroughfares and what we can do with money and grants and things. So it's a big problem, but it's something they've kicked down the road for 100 years or more, you know? And now Verona is in a spot where we're going to start developing, I think, faster and faster. And that's just my thought on it.
Councillor Webb?
So on these storm drainage issues, is it really a failure of not having the curbs and storm? I mean, it's definitely storm drainage issue, but I don't, I'm not quite sure I, the buy-in on the curb. Is it more of a lack in our street standards? That you put in a street that has a certain amount of crown and you have that storm drainage adjacent to it, so the water doesn't run down the street? Is that a standard we need to change to address that?
No, so if you're doing a subdivision, our code lines that out perfectly. But if you're, if you're building three homes on Louisiana, there is none of that.
But should we change that? That would be the change.
Yeah.
But I don't.
If it's more than one house, you're going to do this. And it could be, that's a half-street improvement with a crown and a sidewalk, curb and gutter. That could be what you put in there. But right now, nothing exists, so it's kind of a free for all.
Councillor Grant Williams?
If you have someone come in and do a development like up on I Street, they would be responsible for the streets, the curbs and all of that. If they're doing a development, a private person.
That's the thing. We have two, we have single-family homes and we have subdivisions. And a subdivision is three or more and it's dividing property. Subdividing property is what triggers a subdivision. Those lots are already planted, just how he's building on them. So there's nothing to trigger him having to do more than just a single-family home person, which is nothing, which is a gravel road and a waiver to have to put in a sidewalk or put in the sidewalk.
If there isn't an initial grading, we know where the plot, where the lots are plotted, platted. If there's not an initial grading establishing all the heights and the dimensions of the lots, if we do it piecemeal and we do it one at a time or two at a time. Everywhere I've ever seen a development go in, they put the streets in, they put the utilities in. But we don't have that option. So who's going to bear the brunt of that? If it's not the people building the houses, it would be the city, right?
Well, typically, no, it's not the city. Typically, like what Andy did on I Street is he brought in the infrastructure, the sewer and water and all the connections for both sides of the street. He could have gone for a reimbursement district, but he never followed through with that. He could have gone for a reimbursement district, but he never followed through with that. And then he put in the gravel base, which was the minimum requirement. And then did waivers, so he didn't put in sidewalk, curb or gutter, and that's, and then built the houses. That's how the code has you deal with someone on those already platted lots.
That presents us with a real difficulty going forward though. And the way I look at it, it's like a canvas. If, if, if you know where you can build and, or draw or whatever, you can lay it out so that you can move forward in an orderly fashion. But it appears right now that there's no order. And that's the problem that we're having, isn't it?
Grant, it's just whose job is it to pay for the road?
Right.
And if it's the city's job, then we put in H Street. And basically those people that own those lots, their lots just became more valuable on the taxpayers' dime.
Right.
And how is that legit? I don't know. I don't think it is. So it's kind of a conundrum.
To deal with. We got something to solve here.
Yeah.
It's not an easy one because there's already some houses there.
Yeah.
And there's some utilities there. But like, what, three quarters of it is not developed yet really, right?
Yeah, so you have the sewer main and the water coming down Louisiana, but those offshoots, that's either going to be enough people building there.
Things that's off of the main.
Yeah.
And if we don't establish a grid work and establish where the roads are based upon where the lots are platted.
Yeah, we know where the right of what, we know where the right of way is.
One at a time or the curbs one at a time. There's got to be some continuity in the lay of the land and the corners and the intersections.
Yeah, we know where all that is. It's just who's going to put the surface on it. That's all mapped out. They basically took the topography of Vernonia and laid over it. Lots and blocks, right of ways, alleyways, all of it. They, in the thirties, they just laid it over.
But is it graded? Is it, is it graded?
Not graded. So it's just like, it's just like the West Coast of Portland.
That's, that's what I'm talking about. It, it, there's no standard level to determine, you know, elevations on the lots or, uh, you know, in proportion, in relationship to the road.
Yeah, so that's why I'm saying if you did Louisiana, if the city outlays the cash to figure out what's the boundaries of Louisiana, what those elevations are going to be. And then you make the people developing those side roads meet your current elevation that the city set. Then it kind of plays out itself where they go on their own side streets, right? Because it's gonna, you're gonna have to
Yeah, you'd have to tie into the existing infrastructure.
And that's one of the small problems with having people build sidewalks now is if we don't even know where the road profile is supposed to be, then people are going to build sidewalks two blocks away from each other that are going to be ten feet apart and, and it's tough to get a starting point. Even a starting point would require the city to go out there and do quite a bit of work. And now we're paying for it out of our pocket. It's, it's a problem for sure. And it's one that's fairly unique to Vernonia because we had the whole city pre-platted at the turn of the century. It's not something a lot of cities deal with very often. I don't think there's one magic answer that's going to get us where we all want to go. There's hard choices, no matter which way we, we go. But they sure got to be made.
Well, it sounds like Louisiana is the first one to get solved.
Yeah, we're working on that. We're, we're, hopefully the Public Works Committee is going to start up here pretty soon. And we're going to be starting to talk about the estimated cost for that and getting it back in its lines and everything.
It almost sounds like we need to get some firms to give us a price on putting in all of a one big road and bunch of sidewalk and then look at the fees. And okay, your share of that is going to be seventy-five hundred dollars and you're going to pay it before you get a building permit. And then when that gets fifty or sixty or seventy-five percent or whatever council decides, then that work's going to happen. And then it's done uniformly, you know, matching new.
The, the flip side of it, I thought of another way you could do it is you could put in the base, the road base and the curb and gutter and not the sidewalk portion. So I don't know any of you have driven through my neighborhood, but Archie Dass's family owns a lot. And we didn't know where they were going to put their driveway, so it goes sidewalk to grass. And there's just the curb maintains the continuity of the road there. And then when they come in, they'll cut in. So maybe it's the road frontage and the curb and they can either choose to do it themselves or pay to do it.
And then you gotta cut the curb, then you gotta cut the curb out for wherever you want your driveway and reshape it in and, you know?
But typically, if you put the sidewalk first and they don't want their driveway there or the way their house plan is, you, you kind of never know, you know, until someone picks a house and wants to put it there.
Right. Well, there's a lot of different scenarios.
Does our code determine the distance between the curb and the sidewalk? Because you've also got to take into consideration the elevation of the drive.
Yeah, that's in the
It's not just a matter of changing the curb.
Go ahead, Matt.
I was just saying that's in the engineering standards for sure.
Okay. I know in a lot of places it's four feet. You have a curb and then four feet to the sidewalk. There's grass or trees or whatever.
I think standard is six.
Is it six?
It's different everywhere.
Yeah.
Matt, what generally are the, um, the amount of the fees and, and in lieu fees?
Oh, I wouldn't know that because that happens in all the same window. So I, I'm not even privy to those in most of my cities. I can start asking around, but I don't know them off the top of my head for sure.
Yeah.
The other thing that the code does allow council to do is go to a street and say, all of a sudden, this street, you're going to put in sidewalks.
Yeah, and they have thirty days to do it. And if they tell you to pound sand, you have to have the money and the willpower to back it up and do it and, and put a lien against their house.
But there's going to be some of these areas that you're going to have to potentially do that or be willing for the city to pay to do it. Because there's, there's huge amounts of areas that don't have it. So if it becomes a safe route to school on a certain drive or something, you may have to have the conviction to do that or the money to pay for it.
Right.
Counselor Webb.
Yeah, so I would envision if we did the fee and lieu, and there's probably some places where the people, I mean, we might require the curbs and stuff, but they might, you know, it's a sidewalk to nowhere. It makes no sense for, so we would have that. We still require them to pay for that sidewalk. And, and we could reuse those resources to fill in those areas like, like on Louisiana that we'll probably put it down on solely city property. That's our responsibility then to pay for it. You know, we surely, I think if you talk to the public and go, well, we think we want sidewalks more than we'd want pavement in your streets. I'm, I'm sure we're going to get some blowback there. I think people want their streets paved first, but. Uh, so, so I still think that Lee, uh, fee and lieu is, is a, a partial solution to the problem. And I think I've seen where they, one city, they charged a hundred and twenty percent of what they figured the actual cost was. That's how they probably account for inflation. And I don't know, Stephanie, my screen's all locked up. Nobody's, nobody's moving anymore, but I keep getting it. We get an internet connection problem here, but.
There you go.
So.
I, I think it was in Portland, Dale, they charged a hundred and twenty-five percent.
Yep.
Initially, yeah.
I mean, you might, I'm not saying one-twenty is the number, but I'm saying, you know, that, with that concern.
St. Helens.
And, and part of that problem too is, you know, like Louisiana, there's going to be so much construction and stuff going on there. It's really hard to do much improvements in the streets and stuff until we get the majority of the houses in there. Otherwise, we're, we're tearing it up. I was disappointed to see up on Oregon, brand new pavement and we cut through it already. And, you know, those people are going to have to live with that for another thirty years. And we, we really have to avoid that. So.
Is the plan to pave Louisiana all the way from where it is paved all the way to Mellinger, is that the future plan?
I think if it was fully built out, yes, you would, you would not want to keep it gravel.
Because there's a lot of it right now that's just low and kind of wet and trees and.
Yeah.
And, and Josette, do you envisaged, envision in the future maybe having one side of Louisiana with a sidewalk like Missouri?
Yeah, we talked about doing it on the city side. The other side has a lot of kind of embankments, which I think you build a ton of retaining walls. And, and for the most part, on the lower section from the park down, you have the ability to kind of cut in a sidewalk without a whole bunch of excavation there. Um, so I was thinking it's probably matches doing it on the park side, not the uphill homeowner side because there is such embankment there.
Retaining walls are very expensive. Very.
That does, that, uh, about two hundred yard gap between where you can, where it dead ends there and reaches on the other side. That's got a pretty, the city put that rock pit run base in there. That's a pretty good base there. So you, you've, you've got the beginnings of a pretty good road going up, down through there.
Yeah.
Uh, Josette, I have another question. Did you get a whole Ruben and, and check for our entire council to maybe take a, a trip up there and look over it in person and, yeah, how would, would be able to do that without violating the, uh, Oregon ethics?
Yeah, I sent him that question. I don't know if he's in court today or what, but I haven't heard back on a number of emails I sent him in the last couple of days. One option Stephanie and I were thinking is maybe it's like a field trip or it's recorded. There's got to be a way for us to go up and look at what we're talking about as a group. But I, I haven't heard back from him legally exactly what he tells us to do.
I think Louisiana is a great candidate for special grants. Wouldn't it be for a thoroughfare for a school or something like that, Josette?
Yeah, so once we get that preliminary, kind of the topo and the engineering figured out and figure out what we have to do, um, it, yeah, it takes a lot of the boxes for, uh, the grant. Safe routes to schools, you know, giving access to the other areas. It's kind of a future area which they like. They don't like roads to nowhere. They like roads that are going to become a lot of people building off of them. So yeah, it takes a lot of the boxes for sure.
Go ahead, Matt.
Stephanie could probably answer your question on the offsite meeting, um, because she's been through all kinds of trainings to talk about that, but I can help you there too. You're allowed to have an offsite meeting as long as when you get back to the building or here on Zoom, you cure that offsite meeting by telling everybody what you talked about offsite. And as long as that's on the record here on Zoom, then you're allowed to go offsite together. That's okay.
Oh, that sounds like a, a plan. I think it would really benefit us as we're planning all this and moving forward. Uh, Counselor Williams.
Stephanie, I have a question for you. You're on Texas, aren't you? You're on Texas? And I, I understand what you're talking about, the sidewalk there. I was just curious, has the city ever thrown around connecting Texas on through over to Mellinger? Or is that a practical or that out of the question?
Actually, Texas does not go all the way. It actually dead ends at the end of the pavement where the school starts and becomes private property.
Right, and that's what I mean. Is there, do you talk about connecting it up as a, a through street?
You wouldn't be able to connect it because the city doesn't own that right of way. It's not a right of way. It's privately owned.
Okay.
And it's in the county.
Yeah, it's not in the city back in there, Grant.
Right.
So Oregon will be your main thoroughfare and Louisiana probably for quite a while. In, unless the development that peels part ownership in somehow connects over directly toward the school or onto Texas if and when that section becomes city and it gets plotted and there's not houses in the way or something, you know, you might be talking fifty, sixty years down the road, but. I think there's a good conversation to have though because it's heading that way.
Yeah.
Counselor Webb.
So I think I heard a couple of questions for the council tonight is, do we want to continue on with these waivers of remonstrance? Or do we want to replace it with something else? And I think the other question was whether or not we want to, I guess if we do away with the remonstrances, I guess then that puts it, that solves the question of whether we want to handle them, I guess, so. I, I suppose we answer that first one and it'll answer the second one.
Well, it could be, it could be either or. So it could be you still want to allow waivers and staff will approve them. Or you say, we are not doing waivers anymore, period. Everyone puts in sidewalk, curb and gutter. So it's really, that's two
Or something else. If we do the fee and lieu program, that would be, that would be a different option. And we wouldn't be doing the waivers of remonstrance then, so. Um, but if we want to do the waiver, remon, excuse me?
Never mind.
Well, I guess, yeah, there again, it's sidewalk and it's curb and gutter. There's two distinct parts to that. I guess if we want to keep doing the remonstrance, then we need to decide if we want those at the council or, or we want our staff to do those. My personal preference is we set the standards and the staff deals with it, but.
So there's one more question, Dale.
Okay.
Is, does council want to start having some sort of code change to effectively deal with these platted existing lots? That might be one thing you guys need to figure out because that's going to, if you say, this is what we require for plating existing lots, that may also answer some of the waiver sidewalk questions if you're not going to require them or, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Or do we
Kind of solves it in a way too because the money would be there then to, to come back in and, and do those projects. And, uh, you know, and we'd have some economy of scale, so instead of the landowners or the developers trying to do them individually, but, uh, but it's more work for the city to do that.
But it would also, having some sort of code as far as the street goes. Because right now, all we can require a single family home is to put in the gravel standard.
Yeah, and I think if we have storm drainage issues, uh, we need to put in a, a better standard there of how that road's constructed. So, so, and, and the storm drainage. I mean, we should always be putting in storm drainage. Water's going to flow and that's real destructive to road beds if you don't do it correctly, so. I, I would still be comfortable as long, you know, we're going to do gravel in these areas until we can come in and get the pavement, but they, they need to be built for a specification that sheds the water and we have the storm drainage handling the, the water issues.
Even if it's ditches, a requirement somewhere in the code that requires that. Because that currently isn't exactly what happens with the single family home because you're assuming they're going to put in a sidewalk.
Yeah, up there, Josette, is, is all that owned by several different individuals? It's not like owned by one It's not like owned by one guy that's going to eventually build all these houses? Because then it's a lot easier to put these stipulations on. When it's all broke up in little pieces, you can do the exact opposite where all development just stops if you put too much demand on it.
It's all different owners. Some people have two lots. Some people have a set of six. Some people have one.
Right. So there's also that consideration.
Had it and broken up and sold it to their individual kids.
Can you, can you do this? Could you say you're going to have to put sidewalk in and you're going to have to pay a uh, or just? I mean, when you get to a district, then everybody shares, but then as you build, everybody's going to build sidewalk. And then, so you hit them with the sidewalk now and then later, whenever the time comes to put in curb and gutter and street, everybody's going to share that cost as well. So I don't know if that's kind of hitting them twice or, or you know, or how that would work. But I'm, I'm thinking that could be an option because you have so many different owners and not just one big developer that can spread that cost out to everybody as they buy the houses, you know, it's.
So I have a question for Matt, which maybe you know or don't know. Can the city form a reimbursement district?
It's my understanding that they can.
So we could put in these side streets in a reimbursement district. And as people develop those lots, we get the money back.
Yes.
That's also another option.
An impact fee for that if you want to do, and then it's citywide.
Well, but I think, I think we're a town where most of us want whoever's going to benefit to pay for it. Not everybody paying for someone else's benefit. But that's one option too, is maybe, you know, we figure out how to fund it and we just do the offshoot streets and do a reimbursement district where we think someone's going to come in and develop. We put in the sewer, water, street, storm or storm and sidewalk. And then people just build to them.
That's a very strong form of economic development and a lot of cities do that on purpose just to try and get development in. And it often works.
So would that attach to the landowner that's empty and he pays right then? Or does he sell it at a higher price and let the next landowner pay when they build?
Usually the land.
So Josette, I have a question for you. Would that, what you just described, would that um, uh, be applying for a, a, a street opening permit type scenario?
No. So the city would just do all the notices and the whatever we have to do legally to say the city is forming a reimbursement district for H Street. And we go in there, we clear the right of way, we put in the road, the infrastructure, the road base, the hookups, all the, whatever we want. And then we, when someone comes to build, that would be leaned on their properties, I understand it, or on the deed, right, Matt?
I believe so, but that's not really my area of expertise.
We'll have to investigate more. But we've tried when these developers are coming in, we're like, do a reimbursement district, put the full build out in. Go to the city council, apply for reimbursement district, put the full build out in, and then you'll get your money back. And we just haven't had anyone that really has the cash to be able to do that upfront in these developments. But we've been trying to get people to fully do it and get paid back, but nobody's got the capital to flow. But the city could always decide to be that person.
Grant, did you have a, a comment or question?
Yeah, I had a, a question for Matt. I can't remember what percentage of Vernonia is open and available to build on now.
Well, I haven't finished that study yet and it's only pertaining to single family homes. It's not necessarily commercial and everything else.
Right. Well, the commercial district's pretty well, you know, can outline. I'm, I'm thinking about the areas that can be developed. It, when you think of a fee and lieu, do we have a large enough uh, open area where people can build to make that uh, fee and lieu practical? Cause it, it, it sounds like a good option, but if we don't have a large enough area to build and we can't.
We've got that. We've got, it's, it's over 50 acres of vacant land left for single family.
We're talking hundreds of homes.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. So that would be a practical option.
And we've got lots of streets in Vernonia that don't have sidewalks. So we've got lots of recipients to take on new sidewalks.
And to build out 50 acres, that would probably take, like you said, how many years?
Well, it depends on who you ask. The state's forecast projections for Vernonia are abysmal. They think that we get like three homes a year. And that's clearly not correct. And so we are outpacing the state's projections for our city by a long shot.
So I mean, we have, we have at, at least 20, 30 years in order for, for the uh, fee and lieu to be used and still more room to build probably.
Correct. If I'm understanding you correctly, that's correct.
Yeah, that sounds pretty good.
What do we build in 10, 12, 20 new houses a year, Josette?
Stephanie has the better knowledge because she's tracking all of it. She's going to pull it up.
Probably 15, 15 to 20 would be my guess.
Okay. We'll just say 15 average a year. If they had to pay $10,000 fee, it's only 150,000 a year. You know, you're not going to build much road for that. You could put some sidewalk in, but you're not going to get the big problem solved with the infrastructure and all that, obviously.
Well, you were talking five yards of concrete. What do they give you? 150 foot or three foot?
You get 20 feet, 20 feet of sidewalk per yard, Grant, at four feet wide.
Yeah. Oh, four feet wide. Okay.
Yeah. 27 feet at three feet wide. So. Per yard.
Yeah.
So 100 feet, 20 yard or uh, 100 feet is a five yards of concrete. 150 yard bucks a yard or whatever. So. Probably about $3,000 or so to have a sidewalk formed and poured by a contractor. I'm just guessing. I haven't been in the game in a while, but then that's usually not including the earthwork and stuff like that. So.
Right.
But then again, you gotta know where your driveways are going to be. You gotta know your elevations, like we've talked about everybody uh, several times. So. Um, the mandating thing piecemeal can get complicated without a, without a comprehensive plan.
Council Webb.
So question for the city administrator. So how would we fund uh, building out the streets? And it's the, you know, there's the reluctance by these builders to go in and, and put in the whole street when they don't own all the property adjacent to the street. And they've got then their money tied up, waiting for that guy that doesn't want to build on his property. He can't get reimbursed. So I mean, it looks like you would, you know, you could be a long time getting reimbursed. You, you'd always kind of be behind the game catching up. Uh, that looked, I mean, it could be expensive. But I'm, I'm open to ideas.
I think you initially would fund your first project out of S, SDCs. Cause you're increasing the capacity. Um, the other thing, not to stack council, the whole bunch of stuff, but we're working on um, we really need to do an update to our SDCs. We are crazy low in comparison to other places for building a home. So that's another thing we need to look at going forward is doing either a small, just, there's certain things you have to do legally when you're going to increase those, but a study of that. We talked about doing it probably 15 years ago. But I think we charge like a thousand dollars for your street SDC or something? Nothing.
Was it like a thousand for parks?
I think it's like 800 for parks and a thousand 50 or something for streets. That's, you pull it up. But that's one of the things too, is that um, I think you wouldn't just go do everything. You'd kind of pay attention to where are their homes being built? So say it's Louisiana G and you know, where kind of get a feel for it. And your first one, you put in with some background knowledge that those people are interested in building or they're going to sell or something like that.
Or, or maybe the city focuses on thoroughfares first, you know?
Yeah, sure.
Little short side streets. I don't know. Maybe, you know, they almost have to build the street to get the house there. So.
Council Webb.
I'm just open for ideas.
We obviously are faced with some uh, topographical uh, area, you know, areas like, we're not uh, talking about just developing out in a big old farm field where it's all flat. This, this is a, a perfect time of the year when there's water running everywhere. For us to get together like it was talked about earlier and see what's happening out there on the ground. See where it's pooling up, see where it's going over the road. See, I mean, if we go out there this winter and look at it, we can have, get a pretty good idea what we need to do. But I mean, like right now, we're kind of guessing. We have ideas, but if we go look at it, we'll, we'll have a lot better idea about what we're talking about.
That's a good, good idea and comment, Grant.
I'm all for it. I'm retired. Whenever.
I was up there Sunday, Grant, and I can tell you what's there. Mud.
Yeah, that, yeah, right. Yeah.
And a lot of mud being moved around still. So. Yeah.
Especially in the trailer park.
Yeah.
Well, that place is going to be a mess probably for another year and a half, but uh, uh, I Street, I believe it is, that could definitely be improved with a half street improvement with a, with a curb and gutter and, and maybe some asphalt there. I don't know if it makes sense to do a full street. When obviously the, the land on the other side's not even city, I think. Am I correct there, Josette?
Yeah, it's private land. So Matt, I have a question. How many of the cities you work in, do they require a half street improvement for a single family residence? Do any of them?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Well, you, it's hard to require, hard to require for one house at a time. Yeah. But once you get the whole row in there, then what do you do? Some, eventually it's got to get, have to get paved or fixed or something. Unless you want gravel roads till 2022 or 200, 100 years from now or whatever.
Right. Matt, would you please tell me exactly what a half road is?
Half road is usually when you're building your sidewalk, your curb and gutter, and then enough uh, gravel for two cars to pass each other. So it's not even really half a street. It's usually half plus 10. But it, like Josette said, you don't normally hear about residential people building half streets, but you see it all the time for commercial developments and things like that.
So that means graded and gravel.
With enough room for two cars to pass each other. Usually no on-street parking.
Right. But I mean, you, you're not talking about any improvements. You're not talking about any curbs or anything.
No, a half street improvement means building the sidewalk, curb, gutter. And in most cities, when you're talking about half street improvements, you're in a commercial area. So you're talking about pavement. And so you've got pavement, you know, usually uh, to the center mark plus 10 feet, usually.
Thank you.
Yeah. So West Oregon Electric and the Health Center both had half street improvement requirements. So that's how all of Cougar in between them got paid.
Mm-hmm.
And they both have sidewalks on, you know? So do you guys want to set a, a field trip meeting?
Yeah. Did we want to circle back to those three primary questions and just get a idea of what you think?
JR, you, you, you have a pretty busy work schedule. Um.
Fridays, I'm open.
Fridays?
I could take Friday off if I have to.
Okay. Well, we can, well, you can set it up for a Friday, uh, maybe Stephanie or Josette. Would that work for the staff?
Yeah, I think we want to be like an afternoon, right? Like a.
Yeah.
Three o'clock or 2:30 or something. So we have some light.
Yeah, two o'clock.
But do, does anyone have a, Rick, you don't have a, you don't have a run on Fridays at three, do you?
I, I, I do. And um, so uh, the morning have a, actually 11 o'clock would work better for me. Um, because I do have an afternoon run on Friday, but um.
Why don't you guys just set it for what time works for you? And if I can make it, I'll make it. I've already been up there and looked at it three or four times.
Are we talking about having Matt there also? Or we're just doing a walk and then a meeting?
We might want to think about having our city engineer there.
Yeah, get the city engineer up there, not me.
Do you want me to see what Friday they're available?
Sure.
I'll find out what Friday they're available and then I'll schedule it.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions for, for Matt while he's here tonight with us? Or, or discusses with anyone else or city administrator?
I want to thank Matt for being.
Really talked about some, some uh, key items and, and it's, it, it's really nice to have a start and beginning for this um, process. I think eventually it's going to really pay off and, and help make our job a lot easier. Go ahead, Council uh, Webb.
So we've did some talking, but we haven't really given any direction to move forward here. Um, I think Matt was alluding to a little bit, we need to, you know, some of these questions that are before us, we need to have, we need to be given some direction. We can't, we can't make decision here in this meeting, but we can't have the census and we can uh, because when we do get to a regular meeting, we're going to want information coming back to us and to start to decide these issues. Um, so we need to give some guidance, you know? Do we, do we want to further investigate the fee and lieu? Um, do we want to explore the uh, building, the uh, building the streets out ourself? To try to uh, get the streets built properly to begin with and do a reimbursement district? And we need staff to bring, bring us back proposals. Um, what do we do in the interim here on the uh, remonstrances? Uh, I mean, they're going to keep coming at us. They know, they know we're working on this. They're gonna, it's going to be fast and furious coming at us. They're going to want to get in before we change anything. Um, do we want to keep doing them as the council? Do we want staff to be handling this? What am I missing, Josette?
Do you want a moratorium on uh, waivers?
Yeah, that might be, but then we stop building at that time.
Or they just put them in. They follow the code and do what the code asks.
Yeah, that's an option.
So if you, if you want us to look into fee and lieu and the reimbursement, Matt and I can take those separately and look into them, bring them back to your next, like a work session where we kind of give it all to you ahead of time. You can look through everything and all the options and come back with more questions or whatever.
But the first real immediate question that I need to answer, the smallest and easiest question is if you folks don't want to see every single waiver of remonstrance. Unless we're going to put a moratorium on them, but even then I should be fixing the code to say they're okay with just the city manager's signature or you guys want to see everyone. That was really the, the question that's on fire that I need to answer right away. The other two issues are kind of back burner issues. We can keep working on slowly.
Well, I already answered it for me. I think I, we can, I think we should continue to see them because it's going to force us to do something. Well, I already answered it for me. I think I we can, I think we should continue to see him because it's gonna force us to do something about it. Um, pushing it off on Josette, you don't see it, you don't think about it. So. Until this is fixed or settled or changed, I personally would go for. Continuum in front of council because it keeps it front and center, and that's the only reason. It's not that I really want to deal with it. But it makes us as a group deal with it. Uh, as far as uh continuing to remonstrous. I think maybe the fee and lieu becomes the remonstrous. If nothing else can happen, maybe. You're gonna pay the fee. We don't care if you're never gonna put the sidewalk there. You're gonna pay the fee because someday the city might want to come in and put. A huge retaining wall and a sidewalk there, so you're still gonna pay the fee. Um, so there'd be like no more free rides, basically. Um, that's kind of my, just a thought I'm having. Obviously, we're gonna have to talk about it. Uh, and the self putting the self-side streets in, I I think that's another good option if we can swing it financially in these areas that we know. Are gonna get developed. Then we're controlling it. We're gonna have a nice finished product at the end, but. You know, you gotta look at it. How much we're gonna do with one side city, one side's not, but I think we might have to focus on all artery type uh areas. Uh, for kids walking towards schools and stuff. To me, that's my most important thing is is is. The public and the kids walking in dangerous zones and and everything immediately around the school. But that's just my thought. I'll shut up now.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Williams.
What currently is the review system before a decision is made?
For a waiver?
Yeah. I mean, does somebody go look at the situ- does somebody go look at the where they want to do it? I mean. How 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 would the council be involved? How would you be involved if we weren't?
Sure, I I can answer that. Somebody comes in for a um a building permit for a single-family home. And as part of that, they either have to build the sidewalk or request a waiver of remonstrance. And at that point, if they request one, they fill out a form for that. Josette then fills out a staff report that's real short and takes it forward to the city council. If the city council says yes, let's accept a waiver of remonstrance, then we enter into that agreement with the applicant and file the waiver.
So there's really no review of the actual place where the work is gonna be done?
That's what I do before I bring it to you.
Okay.
So I wouldn't do it if there's sidewalks on one side, they would not get their application to you.
Yeah, I do. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, Josette has the authority as the city manager to just say no. You've got, there's there's these three criteria in our code today currently, and if they don't meet those criteria, she can flat out say no, and it never even comes to city council. They just have to go build the darn sidewalk.
Okay, I just want to make sure that there's a a a good review system.
Josette, does this fall on the Public Works Director? I know you don't really call Jeff the Public Works Director, but. Typically, it looks like in these cities, the Public Works Director or someone from Public Works is also involved. I'm just kind of curious why things are falling solely on our city administrator uh being you or whoever it would be in the future.
So partly because we don't have an acting director. Um, and partly because I am paid out of part of public work. So those those higher-up kind of decision-making duties that are not like the boots on the ground really fall to me. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yeah, it makes sense. I just was kind of curious why Jeff doesn't get involved. Um, I guess you would ask him for help if you need him.
Yeah, oh, easily I could ask for help, but for this, I I the reviewing them for criteria and seeing what the site looks like and if there's sidewalks around. That's pretty, that's not a huge effort. That's pretty easy for me to do. As these come in and what have we had? I mean, last year, we probably had eight of them. It's not, it's not a ton. But yeah, if I had a question, uh, Justin here multiple times a day, so there's no issue with. You know, getting his two cents on something, but for the most part, his main majority is. The city's infrastructure as it goes in the different streets and that kind of thing. And then we send it to engineering to make sure it's meeting the public work standards, because that's the missing component. A public works director. Would really be all over that public work standard where. Jeff was never trained like that, nor was he ever tasked with those things, so that's why. I do the administrative part of that public works director, and then if it's a public work standard, it goes to the engineer to make sure.
Right now, our three or four items to meet that uh waiver. Is is what's holding tying your hands, obviously, and that's the part that needs to be changed to get the outcome. It's gonna be different for our city.
Yeah.
Which we could take it all away, or we can keep some of it or put fee and lieu instead of waiver of remonstrous. That kind of thing. So there's still quite a bit of discussion to have. I I kind of like that there's never just a waiver because. Uh, once that house is sold off to people and people aren't paying attention, and the next thing you know, you go up there, knock on their door and send them a letter, and they're all pissed off.
That's right.
Attention. There's a lot of real estate agents that aren't gonna probably point out, hey, you're gonna hit with a $10,000 bill here, you know, maybe next year, so.
Right. And that's kind of the frustration for staff is we see kind of capable developers just kicking the can down the road to the citizen that's gonna live in that house. And that's frustrating for us because they meet the criteria. There's nothing in the code that holds them. To doing this low-hanging fruit-type development, and they're kind of leaving it with a win and leaving the city without the. Sidewalk and the poor homeowner having to put it in down the line.
That's exactly the problem.
And I'm seeing them, they're putting landscaping up there on I Street. They've got, looks to me like there's uh all the all the risers for the. Telephone lines are right about where you'd put a sidewalk, so I'm worried that, you know, we're gonna be going backwards when we do decide to make them. Uh, tearing up the stuff they already put in and and moving stuff to put a sidewalk in at their proper uh offset or whatever code we come up with.
The one tricky thing that did happen in staff, I I don't remember whose idea it was, maybe Stephanie's, maybe Matt's, or maybe the engineers. But um when they got a waiver, a couple people got away with not having a sidewalk on their site plan. And now whether you're putting it in or not, you're required to have that that sidewalk. On your site plan, so all of your setbacks are right, all of the infrastructure is right. There can't be a mess up where if you're missing the sidewalk, you could have something close too close or. You know, to the to the line, so I don't know who we found that a couple people got away with that and now it's in. Everybody's plan of the have to do, so we don't have those hiccups anymore.
Counselor Williams.
Uh, JR, you just hit on exactly what I was trying to communicate earlier, and I guess I failed. When you have lots that are platted out and you don't drop a a a form over that that shows. Where the street's gonna be, where the curb's gonna be, where the sidewalk's gonna be, you're gonna run into what you're talking about, having a telephone pole in the middle of the curb. And and my only thought is if if we don't, as as a city, say, you have to. Build this into the where you're gonna put the house. If that's not done ahead of time. We're gonna constantly be going back and changing things, curbs, everything else. I I see it as a real need to establish where the street and the curbs are gonna be before they build anything.
Right, and that's gonna cost the city money, which is gonna ultimately have to be passed on to SDCs and fees and and. And um in in lieu of fees and then that kind of thing, so we need to get a better understanding of what this is gonna cost. And probably have to change our fee structure if we ever want serious improvements, you know. Uh, if we ever want to go back and do it at the later date, you know. Uh, if you don't have the money, you're never gonna go back and do it. So if you're undercharging and everybody's, hooray, hooray, we'll do it later. Well, later ends up with a bill six times higher than you thought it was gonna be because you didn't do the. Research and allow for inflation and and, you know. It's a hard, it's a hard number to come up with when you say we're gonna charge you 150% of it now. And then they'll say, well, I'll just put it in. Well, then they'll say, okay, well, give me the elevations. Well, we don't want you to put it in yet because we don't have those elevations yet, so.
Can't we do the minimum? Can't we do the minimum of what Matt was talking about? Two lanes, one going each way, gravel. I mean, that establishes at least a center line from which you can work back.
We can do anything.
It's doing the curbs and 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 the sidewalks, but at least it it gives you a point from which you can measure. For the future when you do put the curb and sidewalk in.
Well, that works, that's okay on a little short run, a brand-new street or something, but when you're a half a mile down Louisiana from Knott Street and it's all up and down and all over and someone wants to build at the back. Are you gonna tell them they gotta build a whole new road all the way back there? So, you know, it.
Well, is it gonna be a city street?
Well, it is a city street, Louisiana.
Saying if they want to build up in a in a in a, they've got an unusual lot and they've got a driveway off of. A city street, I mean, there's gotta be, there's gotta be some kind of a standard.
Well, driveway, that's on them. We're talking city streets here, obviously. There is the big problem, the city streets and the placement of the sidewalks. Uh, but I'm all for them putting in the sidewalks. I think it's, they'll be glad they have them later for their kids and for everybody. And even the looks of their house, the value, but we have to have our act together with the engineering. The stormwater, the big plan has to be done, so we're not cutting through and changing things and going backwards. Um.
That's what I'm saying. We got, you gotta do, you gotta get the the at least the minimum uh background work done. So that you have a line to measure from. If you just bulldoze up through some trees and you say, well, that's I Street. Uh, that's not, doesn't sound very good to me.
Well, it doesn't sound good to me either, but I'm sure they had to do some survey more uh work and put that uh street where it goes. Um, Josette could tell you more about that.
So Grant, do you see what I'm showing you here?
Yes, I do.
When you, if we were gonna bulldoze and do a right-of-way.
Right.
Um, let me pull it up here. See the red line?
Yes.
Can you put your mouse on it, Josette?
Yeah, so this is the red line.
Right.
Can't tell if you're seeing it.
Yeah, I can see it.
So that's G Street. And here's the top part of it. So if we were gonna do it or a developer's gonna do it, the first thing they're gonna have to do is get a survey. Of those points. So they're gonna bulldoze through the trees, but they're gonna be bulldozing down some lines, right?
Right.
So the those all exist. If you look here, the. There's an alley platted here. This is already in three pieces. This piece here is already, that's a whole bunch of homes. That's potentially six homes. That's not subdivided yet, but see down here where my cursor is, this this property here. This property is somebody else. This property is yet another somebody else. So there's no code that tells staff, how do you deal with this person? Other than the minimum road going in and them having to get their laterals or utilities to there. So that's kind of what we're dealing with is the lines are there. We can have the lines surveyed and marked. We just, the rest of it's an unknown, if that makes sense.
It does. Uh, potentially, how many uh structures would be on I Street? That are gonna be dependent upon a city street with curbs and sidewalks?
So right here, if they did it this, if they did them like they did these homes here, there could be six homes on each side of the street.
You have to remember when you're looking at the GIS system here, uh, that what you're seeing actually isn't the legal lots of record. You're looking at the tax lots, and so for the benefit of the of the city council, those lots are. Are just, they've been amalgamated for tax purposes, but they're not real. That one highlighted square she had on her screen is actually six lots. It's not one. And that's important to keep in mind and.
Sorry, I'm trying to get you the tax map. So this is how they look.
That's that's the real legal lots of record. The tax lots don't matter at all. They're completely fictitious. Ignore them. They mislead everybody. They're horrible. This is what matters. This is the legal lots of record.
You could have six on each side of I Street on each side of it. So you would have in just I Street in Louisiana, you'd have 24 homes.
Now, also, Grant, you have to take Josette's uh statement and kind of take it one step further too. Josette was right. The first step in getting that street to go through is getting it surveyed, so you can really see where those things are on the ground. But then the next step is to get an engineering profile of the street, and that's where you send an engineer out there to actually see elevation-wise, where's it gonna be? How much dirt do you have to move? What do those grading slopes look like? Where will the curb and gutter be and how big will they be? It sounds like that's what you want done, but to do an engineering profile for every street in the entire city. Would be a pretty monumental chore. That's why we normally wait for a developer to come along and then say, great, that street is in our system. It is required. You have to build it. Now you go out and do the engineering profile, you go out and do the survey work and then tell us. Uh, what, how that street needs to get built, and then normally they build the street after that.
Josette, did we do an engineering profile on I Street or did developer do it or did he just build the street?
He paid our city engineer to do one.
Okay.
So he had an engineer that he paid and then he paid our or our, we paid our engineer and he paid for our engineering costs. Engineering was done times two on I Street. It was all done to the code and the public work standard.
That's right.
It sounds like he did more than he had to do, really, uh, as far as our code was concerned, because he wanted to develop those lots. Am I correct?
We would not let him build those lots without him putting in the street.
So what you said is actually not correct because uh JR, because we we told him he had to go do all that in order to build the street, and it was all on him.
It's not in our, it's not in our code, though, for a single housing. Lot, right?
He wasn't building just one. He was building several.
He was building less than three or three, which is not a development, the way I understand it. Is that correct?
Hold on. Regardless of it being a single-family or subdivision, he did not have access to those lots. So if he was only building one, he had, which I have had elsewhere like Spencer, which I guess technically it's still. Um, they have to pay an engineer and make sure that that street will be developed to our code in order to get access to their lot.
That's right.
That's the cliffhanger. If if you want, need access to your lot, you have to pay for a right-of-way and develop it. If it's already there, then you don't have to do that.
Sounds like he's not being smart by uh by filing that paperwork to get some of that reimbursement on that other side if it ever came to to uh fruition there.
Absolutely true.
Yeah, he's doing the same thing for G and H Street also.
Now, is he doing this and and expecting waivers of remonstrous on the sidewalks then for doing this? Or I mean, is he gonna freak out with all of a sudden we say, no, you're putting in sidewalk?
Well, he already has six of them approved, so only has six more to go in the G and H Street development. Well, it's not a development, but it's the easiest way to refer to it.
Right, right, right. Well, it sounds like by the time we catch up, we're gonna be putting some of this back on the new homeowner, so unfortunately.
Counselor Williams, soon I'll get to you, Counselor Webb.
Okay, back to what I was talking about about having the uh initial street graded. Let's say you you said you could have 24 houses on I, right? What if you want the one that's that's the very, what if your lot is the one at the very top? I I, without having that graded out and, you know, just rudimentary dimensions established. How 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 do you buy a lot?
So this is the thing. So the trees on the platted right-of-way.
Right.
Belong to the adjacent property owner.
Mm-hmm.
So they're gonna go in there, they're gonna cut in, cut the trees down for their, to get access to their lot. They're gonna have to put whatever trees they cut that are on their neighbor's lot in front of their neighbor's property. You know, or on their neighbor's property, because only the ones halfway to the middle of the road in front of their frontage. you know, or on their neighbor's property, because only the ones halfway to the middle of the road in front of their frontage is what's theirs. And then they would be required to put that road in. That's the thing is that I think why a lot of this is that is because you have all those different property owners and the guy on the far end is probably never going to take the chance. He's going to wait till the first few do some development and then sell his lot or build on his lot.
Yeah, because the one at the very end of the street is going to be cheaper.
It's going to be cheaper then, once someone's done the work.
It'll be cheaper at that time. Because it's so hard to get to.
Counselor Webb.
So coming back to Counselor Allen's point on the trailer cart, trailer park properties in there. And we've already been given remonstrances. It'd be really awkward. You're not going to give any. So yeah, you got this development to hodgepodge. I, I still think the fee in lieu is probably the way to, to kind of you allow them to keep going while we get our ducks in a row. And we do collect that money that if we do want to come back in there and put that stuff in, we at least we got some, some money to work with. And then we always, you know, like Counselor Williams was talking about, you kind of have these one offs that somebody's got a parcel there on, you know, a lot like up on Cherry Street. I think the Shaw girls putting that one in and you know, sometimes there's a place for it, sometimes there isn't a place for it, for these remonstrances. But I've kind of, I've toyed with the idea that, you know, we, this is all our city. Somebody brought up the possibility, I, I think Matt did about having some type of a tax thing. I was thinking even just a simple fee that helps build out these sidewalks. But, but doing the fee in lieu is really the mechanism. You're developing and and we're front loading this. That's what's so important in this discussion. These waiving these, doing these waivers of remonstrance, we're putting it back on the homeowners that he's got a $400,000 home he's trying to pay for and struggling. And then we come along and dump a load on him to want to try to get sidewalks and curbs and stuff in. It's, it's not going to work very well. If we get the fees up in front, those go into a 30 year mortgage. They're going to be amortized over a long length of time. That's more doable for people trying to develop and and buy homes. So I'd, I'd like to see something brought forward to us from this fee in lieu. And how do the other cities deal with the different frontages? I mean, is it just your frontage and that's just the way it is? And that's, that probably is, that's probably is how they do it. That's probably just life, but or do we do something else that we all shoulder the burden a little more equally? We battered around the same idea on the gas tax for helping with pave the streets. And and that's what's everybody shouldering the burden or even some of the outsiders, but but yeah, I, I think we need, I, these remonstrances keep coming at us. So I think we need to move fairly quickly to put something in place. So when we have, you know, make that decision, I mean, I don't, I, I just couldn't envision if Andy comes back to us and we go, wow, the other six, we're not going to give you remonstrance. And we got to hodgepodge the sidewalks in there, developed, undeveloped, it's just gaps and and he'd probably do that just to give us a black eye, so. But if we, if we, if we move to the fee in lieu pretty quickly, we, we would at least have that resource. And he isn't getting away with doing nothing at that point. All right, I yield the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. With it. Can we ask staff to bring us back a more details on the, on the, in lieu fees? And maybe set up another workshop the last week of the month to be presented with those and move on from there. Stephanie, or how do you want to do this, in another workshop?
Yeah, why don't we wait until I know what day the engineer can meet with us? Because I think you guys should meet, should do the walk before you have your next work session.
Okay.
But can I just state what Matt and I hear you saying that staff should be looking into while we're waiting for that date?
Sure.
Please.
Okay, so one thing I heard was perhaps talking to our engineer and getting an estimate of what it would cost to do an elevation topo and sidewalk curb and gutter. What they foresee that plan being either on Louisiana, a section of it on a side street. So we can kind of play around with numbers of what that would cost to have that preliminary data. And then you wanted us to look into what the other streets are doing for the fee in lieu. Is it by frontage by linear feet? Is it a flat fee, just a fee in lieu? Doesn't matter how much frontage you have. And then Matt, you were going to look at something, but it was a planning thing, so my brain didn't catch it.
Well, gosh, I don't remember specifically what that was.
There was some other, we were going to look at what other communities have done. Well, and I can look into the, if you guys wanted to do the city reimbursement district to look at what that would look like legally. There was one other thing that was, had to do with Matt and I don't remember.
I can't remember.
I think it looks like they do the fee in lieu of.
Okay, maybe I already hit it then.
And do we need legal on that involved in the fee in lieu of?
Well, certainly eventually, but if you just want some more information on how they work from other cities, I can certainly go looking for that for you.
I think once you kind of see how other cities do it, they had to have done it legally. And whatever version you come up with, we would then save our money for having them review it once you like something.
Yeah. Yeah, you have a corner lot, your price just doubled, I would think, because you're going to have a lot more frontage.
Yeah.
That's true.
So I would be looking for a lineal foot. That would be my recommendation. So it'd be pretty easy to calculate. And are we, are we looking for just sidewalk on that? Are we looking for curb and gutter? I think the, I think it should be both myself.
Well, we'll look what everybody else does.
What'd you say, Matt?
We can certainly look into what everybody else does as far as it's sidewalk curb gutter drainage. And we'll see what goes into their in lieu.
Okay.
And what, what, what would happen if they say, no, I don't want to pay the fee, I will just install it? You know?
Excellent.
And we give them, we give them a one, you know, maybe we give them a year to get it in because if you're in a development or everything's just smashing and crashing, you really don't want to force them to put it in just before you move in when things are still going to get tore up. So I, I know some cities here say you can't even move into the house until it's completed. So I don't know if that's the direction we want to go or, or.
If, if we didn't require them to put in the, the improvements before they get a certificate of occupancy, we will never get them to do it.
No.
They would have to install it before they can move into that house.
Well, that's true. That's, that's.
Counselor Webb.
And when you guys are looking into this, see if you see any cities that are taking maybe a more targeted approach to their sidewalks. You know, just like we've talked about Louisiana, we'd put one down one side of it. I, I don't know if I'm a firm believer that every street's got to have a sidewalk on both sides. I mean, that's my opinion. We have, Missouri is a great street. It doesn't have sidewalk both sides. There's, there's all over town that way, so. There again, I would be around the legal issue of if we make them pay and, you know, that, that's the legal part of it. You're, you're paying fee in lieu and you don't get a sidewalk, but there's one on the other side that you do get to use, so. And low density or low traffic areas, it's walking across the street. I walk all over this town. I've never had an issue of traffic, so.
Okay, anything else? Well, it sounds like we really headed the right way here and and any more discussion or questions or things we want to know about? So we'll wait and, and get a date for a field trip from Stephanie in the near future and I suppose we'll, you'll find out about it at the, at the next council meeting, maybe on the, on Tuesday, the 19th, so. Well, if there's no other discussion, I, I want to thank Matt for participating and, and it was a good workshop. So if there's nothing else, I, I'll close the workshop. And so I will adjourn the, the workshop at 7:45 PM. Good night, all.
Good night.